Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have the clerk call roll, please.
Mr. Pollin?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Erlo?
Here.
Counselor Grizzle?
Here.
And Counselor Reese Camp is absent.
Thank you. Approval of council minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the last regular session minutes?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2018 August 8th regular session minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved. We have the consent calendar, tonight agenda for September 12th. We have appointments, the Trees and Trails Advisory Committee, City Councilor Grizzle, and Rick Barnett, Jan Diamante, Rod Sell, Ron Whitlatch, and Jason Williams. We have the board minutes, the Arts Commission from June 25th, 2018, Historic Museum Ad-hoc Committee, 2018, June 28th, Senior Disabled Services Advisory Committee, April 18th, 2018.
Move for approval. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The consent calendar has passed. Tonight, we have a few proclamations. If you'll kind of hang in with me here. The first one is American Legion Day, September 16th, 2018. Whereas the American Legion was chartered by Congress in 1919 on September 16th as a wartime veterans organization based on the four pillars of veterans affairs and rehabilitation, national security, Americanism, and children and youth. And whereas the American Legion is an eminent community service organization with legion posts worldwide working a variety of programs that support the four pillars and benefit our nation's veterans, its service members, their families, and the youth of America, and its citizens. And whereas legion members are dedicated to upholding the ideals of freedom and democracy while working to make a difference in the lives of fellow Americans. And whereas the 2018 observance of American Legion Day provides an opportunity to recognize local CNTM post number 51 and the legionnaires in our community for their community contributions. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2018, as American Legion Day. And we have, Commander, if you want to come on up and we'll take a picture real quick. Okay, and next up is, September 17th through the 23rd is Constitution Week. Proclamation, whereas September 17th, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the framing of the United States Constitution. And whereas the Constitution defined two axioms for our nation, basic human equality and a right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the Constitution declared that the governing would be upheld by three branches, the executive, the legislative, and the judicial branch. Whereas throughout its changes, the Constitution's foundation has endured and adapted. And whereas, the Constitution Week is an opportunity to acknowledge the work of our founding fathers and to honor the U.S. Constitution. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paul R. Aziz, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of Lebanon and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Did we have anybody here from the group? No, okay. And last up, we have Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the city of Lebanon is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, with homes being the location where people are at greatest risk of fire. And whereas home fires killed 2,735 people in the United States and fire departments responded to 352,000 home fires. And whereas, smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, Lebanon's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, this year's theme of look, listen, learn, be aware, fire can happen anywhere, effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. I, therefore, I, Mayor Paul R. Aziz, do hereby proclaim October 7th through the 13th, 2018, as Fire Prevention Week and urge everyone to develop and practice a home fire escape plan with your entire household and participate in the public safety activities of Lebanon's fire department during this week. Want to get a picture with you? Do a butt flag here.
It's adorable.
I got it. Thank you.
And just a little side note on that. Thank you for the fire department's activities and helping out yesterday in our event, the 911 event, and also the police department and all the other volunteers that helped out. It was a great event out there. It was wet and it was cold, but we still had people showed up out there. It was really nice. Thank you everybody for helping.
Thanks, City Manager Marks, for those coins. I heard a lot of people.
Beautiful.
A lot of our members were really impressed and thankful to get those.
Yeah, and there was a veteran that was sitting right in front of me, and he was just ecstatic that he got that coin. So it was really neat. And he was from the veterans home, so that was cool. Okay, at this time, we have public comments. Council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. City Clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. Is there anybody that would like to address council? Alicia, what up?
Hello, everyone. My name's Alicia Rogers. I am the Main Street Manager for Lebanon Downtown Association. I missed you last month, so I thought I would come this month and give you just an update on LDA. But I wrote them all down because I always forget something. So first off, we have decided to extend the First Fridays program. It was so successful through the summer that we're going to extend it through the end of the year. So October, November, December, the first Friday of each of those months, we're going to be doing fun activities downtown still. Businesses will stay open later. In October, expect to see a pumpkin painting contest, and hopefully throughout the entire month, we'll have those displayed in windows downtown with the voting and award for the most creative pumpkin coming up the end of October at our downtown trick-or-treat, which is also set for 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on October 31st. And we're starting to contact businesses about filling up any vacancies of downtown and just having a really full Main Street for that event. And then our other thing that we have coming up that we're implementing this year is a Jingle Bell Run. So a 5K, one-mile walk and 5K on the morning of Holidays in the Park, so that'll be on December 1st. So expect to see some information coming out about that soon as well. We're just going to extend that day and make it a whole day celebrating downtown. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I really appreciate your reports that you come up, and it really is helpful for me to know what's going on in downtown. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Okay, seen none. We will move on to the regular session. Number one, inter-fund loan transfer, under drainage project, Matt Afkin, Finance Director.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I come tonight to kind of go over the memorandum that I sent out. If you guys remember back, it's probably been two council meetings ago, maybe even three, Ron Whitlatch came to you guys to get approval on a change order for the water treatment plant, which covered the under drainage project that we agreed with the city of Albany to do. Originally at that time, their best guess estimate at the time was about $150,000 to do the project. Turns out that was very low on what the estimate was because the change order ended up being And at that time, we talked to you guys about coming back with a resolution to do an inter-fund transfer to fund the project. So that's what I'm coming with you today. We're looking for a $400,000 inter-fund loan between the street improvement SDC fund to the storm drainage utility fund, and that would be at the current interest rate of the LGIP of 2.25 percent. In that amount, we've also built in contingency for the project, just to make sure that we have enough. If it's not spent, the money won't go over to that fund, but we would update the repayment schedule and get it paid back sooner than what this currently shows. Do you have any questions?
Can you talk about the gap there and just where that came from?
The gap between the estimate?
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, it was a very, the estimate didn't have any specific contractors going out to get estimates. It was communication between our city officials in Albany, because it's part of an agreement that we have with them that we do it. And at that time, it was just a rough, yeah, it'll probably cost $150,000. So that's where that main, it wasn't something that we had gone out and said, oh, this is how much something like that would cost.
Okay.
I know Ron's in the back, if he has any additional.
And that was the project that had to be done while we're doing the water treatment plant, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, seen none, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution, please.
Resolution number 2018-30, a resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan and budget appropriation for the canal under drain project.
Move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2018-30. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Thank you, Matt. Next up, report on RV parks within the city limits. Walt Wendelowski.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As you're aware, I assist and ask the council to look into the issue of possibly allowing private RV parks and campgrounds within city limits. I'd just like to note for the record that within our development code, I've cited the appropriate sections in Attachment A, that we do allow RV parks and campgrounds only if they're publicly owned. And so they're either allowed outright in a way of administrative review if we have a parks master plan, or through a conditional use process within the residential zones. I also look back just for a little history in our prior zoning ordinance, and we'd never mentioned RV parks or campgrounds, but we did talk about government-operated installations and land uses, which might well include that. So we seem to have a history, if you will, of these facilities are, must be operated by the government. And that was, I think, clarified with the adoption of the new development code. I put a question out to the other city planners on the Oregon Planning Network, and I asked whether or not the city allows privately operated campgrounds within the city limits. And I also asked whether or not there were any issues. And I did receive eight responses out of 241 cities. That's really not a high percentage, but six of the respondents did note that the cities allow them, either through a conditional use application or through a site plan review. Usually, they're placed in the commercial or industrial zone. And regarding their experiences, they were fairly mixed. Even though they're allowed, one city does not have any RV parks, another city had no apparent issues. One city said they only have one park, but it's extremely well-run, and so it's worked out well. However, I did have a couple of comments as to the negative aspects of it as well. And as expected, the comments were, without proper enforcement, people basically live there. It becomes a residential subdivision, if you will. There was also one other concern with regard to the RV park located within a floodplain. It's not an issue here, but I want to make sure, you know, you get the full flavor. There are some floodplain regulations for that. There was one other comment from a planner at the Council of Governments, the Mid Valley, and I've worked with this gentleman before. In fact, he's doing the planning work in the cities I used to contract with. And he said, essentially, the communities don't like the RV parks, there is little value. There is also a situation of very low tax revenue, but there's increased demands on the library and on police protection as well. So that's certainly been my experience working with the 30-plus years as a planner. Unless these are properly enforced, the RV park effectively becomes permanent residential housing. Now, most of the codes I've dealt with have a limitation for 14 days, and then the resident has to move on to wherever. The problem is, unless you have strict enforcement on this, it's awful hard to say who's there 14 days and who's not there 14 days. They can be in space number three one for two weeks and then move to space 20. Well, they've, you know, actually moved. And how, you know, you start getting into some very detailed situations. If they leave the campground for one day and return, does that count as a new stay? And unless you're willing to put the time and money into policing a private RV park, it gets extremely difficult to keep that 14-day limit in place. With our parks, it's fairly easy. We control guilt's landing. If there's an issue, we do have police enforcement as immediate backup. If it's a private park, early enforcement action would be civil. And that's going to be very expensive and time-consuming for the city to follow through. I'm sharing my experiences on this. I also talked to a couple of folks who were part of the development code approval, and they really had no particular background information to share on why that provision was in our code. I will note that if you wish to go ahead and allow the use, I put 60 to 120 days for the process, but I think realistically, going through work sessions and whatnot, it'd probably be three to four, maybe even five months before the commission would be able to get back to the city council with a response. And I think one of the issues we're also going to face is, what is the appropriate zoning to place an RV park? You know, commercial and industrial property is very dear to the city, and that's just something to consider. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and certainly based on the council's direction, staff will proceed.
Well, did you have the discussion with the Planning Commission, like in a Planning Commission meeting, to say?
No.
What their opinions were? Because they're much more involved in that kind of thing.
Right. I talked to, we, let me see, our development code, the current one, was adopted in 2008. There was about a three-and-a-half-year process to get that document in place. I talked to a couple of people who were on the committee at the time. Do you have any notes or recollection why? And there was no real clear understanding why that's there.
Not about why, but possibly, like if we as a body decide, okay, we're going to allow this.
Mm-hmm.
There's ramifications, like, they will be able to think through the ramifications. I would want, I guess I would want their input on what all that would mean. I would want input from the police department and Kevin Bukhite before we just said, yes, we'd like to see it.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess I would like to know from the departments what kind of strain they feel like, what kind of enforcement possibilities we have. I don't know. I guess I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward until we had that.
Well, one suggestion then, if it's acceptable to the council, I could always, the next Planning Commission meeting is October 17, and I could always bring this issue up with the Planning Commission and forward their comments to the council if you find that to be acceptable.
I'm not really interested personally in going forward with this, and I don't, I hate to waste the time of staff and the commission further exploring it. I've seen parks like this in other cities, and I've experienced the private park issues that you're describing, and I don't know that that's necessarily a pool that Lebanon wants to jump into, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, I have similar reservations. My experience as a health director in previous municipalities and counties, private parks tend to be quickly deteriorating into a situation which requires a great deal of enforcement. And without that civil enforcement, constant and unrelenting enforcement actions, which become a drain on resources and a constant thorn in the public eye, an eyesore, quickly becomes a community problem, becomes a press issue, verbal bantering, back and forth, and there are no winners in these debates.
Bob, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I would have to agree with the two that just spoke up. I don't think we need this, and I don't think it's worth the problem. I know the police will have to be much more involved in it, and I just don't like it at all.
Okay.
I mean, there are beautiful private RV parks out there.
Yeah.
But they're charging $200, $300 a space per night. They're designed for the big coaches and the expensive RVs. I don't see a demographic like that in Lebanon. And what I fear is that a lot of our RVs that tend to bounce around town might end up in one of those spots semi-permanently. It becomes an issue for the property owner how to get that non-payment out. Because for an operator, hey, 20 bucks a day is better than nothing. I'll fill that spot. And now they've got to take on the task of possibly evicting someone. It just, it seems to open a lot of Pandora's Box of problems for me.
Flag?
I kind of echo, I think, what I'm hearing here. I'm not sure what we're gaining by it.
Okay. And I agree with pretty much everybody else. I was interested in this, but now that you brought the facts, and that was what we wanted you to do, it does make sense. And I wasn't aware that it would have to be civilly enforced, and that brings up a whole new can of worms.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so at this point, it sounds like there's a consensus that we'll just drop it at this point. I'll contact the person who had contacted me, and we'll let them know if they're not aware of what we decide. So, thank you, Walt. Appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
Due diligence, Walt.
Yep. It always helps to come back and have good information. Okay, creating a Ralston Park Improvement Plan Ad-Hoc Committee, Gary Marks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as you're aware, Action Item 5.5 of the Lebanon 2040 Community Strategic Action Plan calls for the development of an improvement plan for Ralston Park. Realizing that, the budget was put together this current year to include some funds to move that plan forward. And as we did that, we knew that we would be, sometime during this year, we'd be forming a committee to represent the community and to have some council leadership and some staff guidance on it, so that whatever plan we come up with is reflective of what the immediate neighborhood and the community desires for the future of Ralston Park. So for that reason, on the agenda tonight is a resolution creating a Ralston Park Improvement Plan Ad-Hoc Advisory Committee. The committee is proposed to include four members of the public who reside or work within a four-block radius of the park, one city council member who would also act as the chair of the committee, and two city staff members. The committee would have their work completed by the end of June 2019. And if you have any questions about the proposal, I'll be happy to respond, but I do recommend that you go forward with the resolution and create this committee.
Any questions? Okay, seen none, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution, please.
Resolution number 2018-31, a resolution of the city of Lebanon, creating a Ralston Park Improvement Plan Ad-Hoc Advisory Committee.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2018-31. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Resolution passes. Thank you, Gary. City Managers' Report.
Based upon some previous discussion and Jason's report and interest in that area, I think he would be a natural representative for the city council.
Yeah, I'm more than willing to do that. I think that there's an appointment next month or...
Yeah, we'll be making an appointment unless anyone else wants to fight him for it.
That poor committee.
Thank you, Jason. City Managers' Report.
Members of the council, my written report is in the agenda packet. Looking over it, there's nothing that I see that really I have to expand on at this time. Of course, if there's anything that's in the report that you would like me to respond to, I'd be happy to do so.
Catalyst position?
Yes, we're in the midst of our recruitment right now. I reviewed the candidate pool that we've acquired so far. And like most recruitments these days, it's not as strong as we would like. So I think what we're going to do is we're going to reopen the recruitment period, take on more applicants over the next several weeks. We've got a few applications that we're going to probably pre-interview those individuals. I don't want to bring those folks forward to the full-blown interview panel if it's clear they're not really in line with the job description that we have in mind. And sometimes it's hard to determine just based on a written resume and an application. So we're going to do some work to vet a few of those. There may be a couple of candidates in the pool now that we feel we might want to have the committee interview, but we'd like to bring a full slate of candidates at one time to the interview panel. So unfortunately, I think we're going to be running a little bit behind where we wanted to be on this, but ultimately, our goal is to get the best possible person into that position to be as effective as possible. So what we're finding with the way the demographics have worked in the workforce in the last several years, that it's becoming more and more difficult to find qualified candidates for key positions. And I think that's certainly what we're seeing here. So we're going to keep plugging away and make sure we get a solid person into the position.
How much time have you got, Gary, before you really need someone on board?
Well, interesting you ask. We talked about that today, you know, what do we really need to do? You know, there are projects that we would like to task this individual with right away, but we don't want to do that at the expense of putting the wrong person in the position and then regretting it. That ends up costing you far more. So I don't think there's anything that is jeopardized in the long run, and I think there's a lot to be gained by doing our best to get a quality hire into the position.
Okay.
Is salary range competitive?
Yeah, we did a survey before going ahead with the recruitment, and I still feel good about that. What we have found, particularly in the last two years, in several of our recruitments, it's becoming pretty commonplace that we go out twice, at least, at least twice. The Dispatch is the latest example, where we went out and we received a candidate pool, and after the interview committee looked at all of those, they decided, no, we need to go out again. I'm glad we did because we ended up with an awesome hire, I feel, someone who I think is going to excel in the position. We've seen the same thing with when we had the library director recruitment, certainly with the finance director. All of those required us to go out twice. So I guess, you know, in this economy... So I guess, you know, in this economy, with a growing economy, a shrinking pool of qualified applicants nationwide, it's almost expected. And when you read HR journals and understand what's happening in the industry, we're not alone in this. There are some cities that go for a year or two trying to fill a position because they're not willing just to hire anybody. So it's just tough, and you have to, you have to be determined not to hire out of a sense of urgency, but rather to hire when you feel in your gut that you've got the right person for the job.
What's Plan B, or Plan C, I guess it is, if we go out again, we still get a weak pool, we have a weak pool, and we decide nobody in here is the fit? Do we carry on business as usual and shell this? Or do we continue to, at what point does desperation kind of play in, where now you're looking to just fill a position?
I'm an optimist, so I believe eventually we'll land the right person. And so I think we just keep fishing until we catch the right individual for the position.
Is it because this position is so unique that it's difficult to find qualified candidates?
I don't know if it's so much unique, it's professional. And what we're finding, as the, and you've probably all heard this before, as the baby boom generation is retiring, there aren't as many qualified and experienced individuals who are interested in municipal government to fill the positions that are being vacated. So we create a new position like this, it's kind of tough, because we're going out into sparse waters, if we use the fishing analysis. But if you stay vigilant to what you're trying to do, eventually you're going to get the right person. And once you have the right person, then you're very glad that you did it. The most important decision any manager can make, and I found this to be very true throughout my entire career, is to hire the right people in the first place. You hire the wrong person because you feel desperate, you usually end up regretting that. It usually costs the organization lots of time and resources, and you don't want to learn that lesson too many times.
We've had that experience.
Yeah, yeah. And I know that's happened with the city here, and we're not alone again in that either. Other organizations have, of course, experienced that. So I think the answer, Councilor Bowlin, is that we just, we just keep doing it, and eventually, we're going to get the right person.
I guess my concern is how long does it go on, and how long does that take? And what changes in the city occur?
If we get several months down the line and we're still fishing, then maybe we need to review the job description again.
Eat steak instead, or?
Pardon me?
Maybe eat steak instead of fish, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I don't know. So anyway, I think we're just going to keep on trying. But I'm hopeful that this next round will get one. And you know, there's a candidate or two in the current pool that I'm just not sure about. I want to have some discussions with them on a preliminary basis, and I may be very, very happy and impressed with what I learned from those individuals. But even at that, I want to come to the committee not with one or two candidates to interview, I want to come with very minimal three, and I'd love to come with five. Thanks for the update.
Any other questions on the managers' report? Okay. CNN, items from council, I've got a couple things to go over. The city clerk sent out the topics for the city manager's evaluation. If you'd look at those, if you have any comments, or you want to change or add, go ahead and send those email back to the city clerk, so we can get those wrapped up. And then they sent out, the city clerk sent out a council read file this past couple weeks. And that was basically kind of an older thing that they used to do, and it was so that we can get our mail quicker as counselors, and our information. I liked it, I thought it was really helpful. And I thought it was good, and not have to worry about getting an invitation to something that's passed, because I've had that, because by the time I get my mail, sometimes. So we want to know if you want to continue that. It'll be, it won't be anything confidential, it'll just be the normal, our mail and the normal stuff that we get.
Was it very labor-intensive to do that? Yeah, I loved it.
In fact, it sounds like it's almost better for them to do it that way than us trying to get us the mail.
I loved it.
Okay. Is it okay with you guys, too? Okay, we will go ahead and do that. And any other items from council?
Yeah, I just want to say, this bench dedication for BLT out at Cheadle Lake Trail on Monday, I'm very excited about that. I was, I thought it was funny that Rod thought it was funny, we're doing it before he's dead. I'm glad we're, I'm glad you're not dead yet. And so that's going to be, that's a really well-deserved, it's hard to overestimate the amount of time and dedication that Rod has put in. And our trails, I flipping love them. Thank you, thank you, Rod, and thank you all to the committee for everything you guys are doing. I love BLT. So, what is it, 10 o'clock? On Monday at Cheadle Lake to dedicate a bench to, in Rod's honor, while he's alive, to see it. That's probably why you're doing it now, it's kind of getting urgent.
And Rod just got reappointed to the new trails committee, or appointed to the new committee, actually. So we appreciate you're willing to do that. And I think you're going to be quite pleased with the candidates that, or the people now that are on the committee. Fantastic. One of them is from Albany, he works at the city of Albany, and he's the...
But he lives here.
He lives here in Lebanon, and I believe he's the Parks and Rec person? I can't remember exactly what he does, but he has a lot of knowledge in the area that we want. It's going to be great. And doesn't hurt to have a little inside with Albany also, so that we can then coordinate things with them, too.
Yeah, well, thank you, Rod.
Should be great. Yeah, thanks, Rod.
He's the city forester.
City forester, that's what it is, thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to say thank you to David Dominey and LPD, and whoever was, whoever else was involved. I know a lot of hands put that on. Another great 9/11 ceremony out there, it was fantastic, and it was well-attended, even though the rain was there. But I know Dave puts a lot of work into that, and if you could pass that along from us, it's just, he does a great job, so we appreciate that.
Very nice. Nice. Okay. CNN, we have another opportunity for public comments, if anybody would like to address council. Way back in the corner there, come on up.
Remember me?
Yeah.
So, real quick, I'm going to come back next city council meeting with both budget for next year's Guitars Under the Stars and the budget from the last one, to share with you folks. I wanted to thank you guys for the support that we got from the city this year, and give some of the good news stuff that happened with the show. We had over 4,000 attend over the weekend, which is really good compared to the previous two years of 1,200 and 800. We had 1,800 out on Saturday alone. So that was a good count, good head count for us. We were really pleased with that. We had a clean show, we had, once again, I believe, a zero-incident event, other than the nice lady who called quite a few folks to let them know how much she was enjoying the show. I think some of you guys got that phone call.
Yeah.
I believe every single one of our sponsors received a thank-you phone call from her. So (laugh) we're probably going to offer to put her up in a hotel a little bit further away from the show next year, if that's going to appease that situation. So we have a fix for that. But I believe that was our one issue.
You're going to get a lot more people complaining.
Yeah, it's pretty loud by my house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Best be careful.
Sure, sure.
That's a slippery slope.
Well, it is, it is, I know, right? It is a rock and roll show, and you're going to have that stuff. But we had, you know, once again, families out having a great time, the water slide was a big hit. The heat, the heat hurt us that weekend, attendance-wise, but it's one of those things you can't plan for, you know? I think as far as the progression of what the show is trying to do for the city, and bring people into Lebanon and create Lebanon as a destination, not a pass-through, I think we're beginning to achieve that, we drew from 11 states outside of Oregon. That is fantastic. Now, it wasn't huge numbers, obviously, we're not Coachella like they are down in California, but that's really telling considering all of our advertising was focused in the Valley and the I-5 corridor. So when you look at the click-through rates for, you know, online sale-to-purchase, you know, click-through-to-purchase rates are 1,000 to 1 for these types of shows. To draw from 11 states when you didn't advertise there at all, that tells me that those folks saw something that they found very compelling, and they acted on it, and they came and had a great time. The feedback that we got from people outside the area is that they plan on making this their annual vacation. And that's the kind of thing that we really want to hear. Those are the things that we want. So we're going to work on making improvements from the feedback that we got to the show itself, to the impact to the community. And when I come back next city council meeting, we will have an already put-together event. We do have a proposed date that we would like to present, and that's going to be the 26th and 27th of July, it'll still be the final weekend of July. So we want to just put our stamp on that weekend and let everyone know that that last weekend, before the jamboree and before the other event, that's what I call them, happens, that we are going to be that weekend every year, and people can plan for that. So we're going to work on doing some things differently this year to make sure that we are adhering to city codes. We screamed a little louder with some of our advertising than apparently was, okay?
I think you needed a few more signs.
Just a couple, I know. And in the future, there's actually a way to petition use of those polls through Pacific Power and get that permission. So we've learned about that process, and we're going to be making sure that we once again put out branded advertising that is recognizable, that is clean, that the city can be proud of, and that is adhering to those codes. So, you know, each year that we do this event, we want to continue to improve, we want to work off of the feedback that we've been given from the city, its residents, and make sure that we're providing an event that, even though it's a rock and roll show, is something that everyone can be proud of. So that's really all I had to share with you today, is our proposed date for next time, which is July 26th and 27th. We're going to, for now, propose to do Friday and Saturday. If we are able to find a sponsor that wants to do a free Thursday for the local community, we will encourage that. And we do have artists that are willing to play that. Until the show gets a foundation where we are financially viable each year and know that we can move forward, we feel it's prudent to cut back to the two evenings.
Very good.
So, but I'll be back with much more information for your next meeting, and then the city can kind of decide what contributions make sense. I know that I asked for the park fee to be waived as a one-time, and we won't be asking for that again. I'll hold my word that we won't ask for that again. But I do want the city to consider what things that you guys can do, now that we've stirred up this hornet's nest of interest. It really looks like we can build this into something that gets a foothold, and Lebanon can be a destination, not a pass-through, once a year for something really nice.
All right, your time's up. Thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Wyatt.
I was almost escaped from without having to hear from you.
Dang it, I was so close.
So, today I have an update, an offer, and a request, and I will be quick about them all. For the update, we are making very good progress on the Trembles building and restoring the original transom windows from 1910. We have had some pretty significant changes with our game plan for how we're going about it, and so we've had to get new bids. We came across Vintage Window Restoration LLC out of Albany, who specializes in transom. We've incorporated their bid into it, and now we have to submit everything to the state to have the new work plan approved. But they know the Chris guy by name, and they seem really excited that he's involved in the project. We might even be a little bit under budget right now, so I'm feeling pretty good about our chances of having that go through. And of course, I'll let everybody know, once we're going to start construction, so we can really make a big deal out of the first downtown revitalization program grant, and Lebanon's first diamond, not grant, loan assistance.
Downtown Building Restoration Program.
For sure. And also Lebanon's First Diamonds in the Rough Grant, which we're pretty excited about. You know, the Lebanon Downtown Association was very, very crucial in getting us that grant because of the connections that we were able to make with the State Department from the state, not the State Department. And the access that we had to figuring out what plans we needed to get approved, what processes we had to go through. And so I'm definitely giving a big shout-out to the Downtown Association for helping us get that grant. I think that their assistance was very crucial in that. Which brings me to my offer. So if, because I believe the catalyst position is a mix of downtown revitalization and some other aspects, if the second round of applications doesn't go as planned, I would love to offer Alicia Services to help out with some of those downtown items, so we can keep those going in the meantime, until a good applicant is found to really take over that position. And then finally, my request, I work at RKI, which is about a block and a half away from the Ralston Park, and it's very important to the Downtown Association and what we do for a few of our events. So I would humbly request that I be considered for that. I would love to help out as both a local business owner and as a member of the Downtown Association.
You know, Jason's on that.
We're pretty good at button hugs.
I think he's asking to be on it.
I just want to be clear, you caught that part of the meeting.
Yeah, we've gone around and around a couple times, we know each other.
Wyatt, there's an application, an online application that you need to fill out.
Perfect, is it already posted?
It's already online, yeah, it's a board appointment.
And there'll be a press release going out for this, announcing that you can apply for this committee, so.
Perfect.
I thought it was going to be money, so I feel really good about that.
Trying to give you something this time.
Thank you for the break on that.
You may need what he was going to offer.
The request.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Wyatt.
You too.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Okay, CNN, items from the press, do you guys have anything? All right. And next scheduled council meetings, October 10th, 2018, 6:00 p.m., regular session; November 14th, 6:00 p.m., regular session. With that, we are adjourned.